Everybody here on? I know. The clock in the back is a little bit wrong, so we don't start by nine o'clock. It's time to sell your bones. Anything you have, we'll bring you a little something else up. Back if you're ready.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C.A.R.P.E.N.T.E.R. Before we get into our quasi judicial agenda, I'd like to ask the Commission if they would consider rescheduling the mobility fee presentation meeting that you previously determined to be at eleven AM on January ninth. One of the two consultants has an adoption of a similar ordinance in a different city that same day and can't be here on that day. Would there be an alternate date that we might consider? I know everyone has busy schedule in January after the holidays.
Is there a deadline on the back end on this?
No, we're... We don't actually have a specific deadline that we're trying to meet other than we'd like to get it done as soon as possible so we can start this process of moving away from proportionate fair share. That would be our urgency.
What was the date it was originally scheduled for?
January ninth at eleven AM, right after the...
Ninth?
Ninth, right after the beach activity.
You want...
At nine AM.
Y'all want to do it on the twenty second after the regular board meeting? In the future? Or does it need to be done down here?
I don't know that it would matter where we do it.
I'm okay with it after the nine o'clock board meeting on the twenty second.
I'm open. I'm open on that. I can do that.
Y'all, we need a motion on that?
Yes, sir, I believe we would.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Thank you. And with that, we have several quasi judicial items this morning. I do have one request to continue, actually two requests to continue on this agenda if you'd like to address those at the beginning. The first one would be item number two, the Lakeview subdivision plat. We're going to request that we continue this one last time to January twenty fourth. This is a project where the infrastructure has been completed and they've just had some delay getting signature on the plat from Regional Utilities approving their certification.
Motion to continue.
Second, I thought we could just get them all at one time.
Oh, I'm sorry, regardless of order.
And the other one would be number five, the Sunset Key cottages plat. Request to continue that one also to January twenty fourth at nine AM in this location.
Motion to continue, both of you.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, sir. The balance of our agenda is quasi judicial.
Anyone who anticipates testifying on any of the items on today's agenda, if you would stand at this time to be sworn in, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth? Okay, when you come forward, if you would, state your name and spell your last name for the record and also state that you've been sworn in. Have any of the Commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of these items?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Would those ex parte communications influence your decision making in any way?
No.
Okay. Did you fill out the form or did Lord? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. That would bring us to item number one, the Bear Creek Phase Three. This is a request to approve by final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Baronte, major development submitted by Morris DePewe Associates on behalf of J&amp;B Freeport LLC. They're requesting approval to subdivide four parcels into a total of three hundred and fifty-one units on approximately two hundred and twenty acres if used a rural village. The specific request this morning is to provide technical approval on Phase Three A and to provide conceptual approval on Phase Three B through F, which would be the remainder of the project. The conceptual approval portion of the project is the portion of the project that surrounds Fluffy Landing Road and still has the issue of the relocation and/or paving of Fluffy Landing Road or relocation of those utilities. The applicant is providing a fifty-foot right-of-way dedication on Fluffy Landing Road to the county as part of that plating once we get to that particular process. The City of Freeport has raised an objection about further approvals of this development. We don't think what is before you this morning is inconsistent with their objection because we're only asking for conceptual approval of that portion that surrounds Fluffy Landing Road and is impacted by the issue of relocating utilities out of the road before that roadway to be paved. Phase Three A is internal to the existing project that's adjacent to Phase Two that's already been constructed. I'd like to request staff report be entered into evidence this morning and be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here also to present their case.
We'll...so moved the staff to call in. Does the applicant have anything they wish to add?
Commissioner David DePewe, D-E-P-E-W, I have been sworn. I'm here basically to answer questions. We think this is a significant improvement over the original design, which was improved back in two thousand and seven. All of the lots are now single family in this development as opposed to the mix of multi and single that was there before. All of the lots back up to green space or lake or preserve area unlike the prior design. We have increased the area that is being preserved. We have added amenities to the overall project itself. We have met or continue to agree that we will meet all of the conditions that were imposed as part of the zoning approval. As Mr. Carpenter indicated to you, this is a technical approval on Phase Three A, which consists of ninety-one lots, one hundred and thirty-one point three acres of residential and sixty-two point eight acres of preservation with conceptual approval on Phases Three B through Three F, which amounts to the balance, which is two hundred and sixty lots, seventy-one point four acres of residential and seventy-two point four acres of preservation. As you can see, there's a large area of preservation on this site now. As I said, the design has been changed rather significantly to reflect, and you can see it here on the board, to reflect a rather more sensitive layout of the lots than what was originally approved as part of the rezoning. What's being requested is Three A, which is the kind of bright green area for technical approval and conceptual approval on the balance. There is also a concern, which I think you're going to hear about this morning briefly, about drainage on Fluffy Landing. We are here to commit that we will assist in whatever way we can, but that is not a situation that we on our own as a development can address. It's one that's going to have to be addressed jointly with the property owners in the county and the area because it's simply a larger area than what we control and what we deal with with our project. So we're happy to assist with that and in terms of the utility issue that Mr. Carpenter raised, again, we'll be resolving, we hope, that issue with the City of Freeport and with Regional Utilities based on what is in the roadway at this time. There are a number of utility lines that have been put into Fluffy Landing Road since two thousand and seven when this condition was imposed and we're diligently attempting to work through that with the City of Freeport and with Regional Utilities. We're here to answer any questions the board might have.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pewe, this is in my district.
Yes, sir.
And I've been down there numerous times due to storm water. If it rains two inches, it raises it two foot in the area. My concern with any project, especially in the geographical location where this is located, is where are you going to collect the water and send it away? So it doesn't impact other areas off the boundary lines that you have. That little creek that's right there in that curve, we fight levers all the time in there and that's going, that's right on the fringe of two of your areas. I just, if you can't answer it, maybe, or you're not the engineer of record.
I'm not the engineer, but I have my engineer here with me.
Maybe that's the one I need to ask these questions.
In general, a non-engineer's answer is that we are going to retain water on site. We are going to treat it for quality and quantity before it's released into the wetland systems that are on site.
Okay.
And let me give the engineer a chance to actually address more specifically the answer to that.
While you're walking up, another question is how much field you're going to have to put in here to get it work? Because right now, if you walk out there now, it'll go bog to you, at least your ankles or further.
Yes, sir. Good morning. My name is Bill Morris. I'm Director of Engineering with Morris DePewe Associates, M.O.R.R.I.S. Yes, ma'am, I was warning. Your first question, Mr. Chapman, if I can repeat it, was that you were concerned about the stormwater treatment and discharge. We are in the process of permitting with Northwest Florida Water Management District and the short answer is that we are complying with their requirements to meet the pre-development, post-development runoff calculations for discharge and storage of water. We have a number of lakes that will be constructed internal to the project that will be used for attenuation of stormwater that runs off of the developed area. It will be dispersed amongst the wetlands that are internal to the project. Within this first phase, there are at least three different lakes that we will be utilizing and there will be more lakes that will be added on, some dry, some wet, but they've all been modeled quite extensively and the amount of fill that will be necessary predominantly on the western side of the site because that's the lower end of the project site will be dictated in order to make sure that we are protecting these future lots from flood impacts.
Okay, when they pop off of your lakes, where's the water go then?
There's a couple of different locations where the water goes. We're putting water back into this braided flowway that runs between Phase Two and opposed Phase Three. There are a couple of different points where water will be put in from there. The future development pods each have their own discharge location. This one will be discharging out into this flowway and the two that are further to the north will be discharging into this flowway and that one right there.
Okay.
And they will do so in a way that mimics the current discharge rates. So it's not a situation where we're going to have this development that's going to increase the amount of water all of a sudden that will be coming off of these properties. It's going to be, the water's going to be allowed to leave the site in a fashion that is close to what currently happens today and does not exceed the allowable discharge rate allowed by the Water Management District.
Okay, I'm just going to mention it because it's a thing that I seen when we had a complaint out there north of thirty-two eighty, just west of Fluffy Landing Road. There's a vacant woodland area north of there and there was, during one of those major toad stranglers that we got, it came down that hill, jumped the road and actually came in right near where that little creek is there. It comes up to the north up to thirty-two eighty and it flooded all back in there. So I don't know if you took into that, can take that into consideration because that, it's up and it comes down.
We, I can assure you that the stormwater modeling, the calculations that we did have a very broad reach and extend further to the north of thirty-two eighty. We took the entire basin into account when we did our due diligence with this design.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Where does those outfalls go to?
The outfalls connect through these braided channels into Bear Creek proper, which on the aerial you can see extends along further to the south. I don't have a way to point it out to you very well, but it comes around through here. It's not highlighted on this graphic, but this turns into a flowway and you can see Bear Creek starts right down here.
And then goes to the bay?
Yes, sir.
So could you explain how y'all are treating that water? Because all these lots are going to generate fertilizer.
Yes, sir. The treatment is based on a series of weirs and filters and littoral areas that are designed as a part of the stormwater management system.
So y'all, are y'all going to have a way of monitoring the outflow into the bay?
Yes, sir.
And make sure it's within acceptable limits?
Yes, sir.
How much field dirt you putting in on the average per lot?
It varies depending on where you are on the site. There's almost, there's very little fill that's being placed on the eastern side of the property. That's the higher side of the property and it increases to about four feet above grade over on the western side.
Okay.
How does that calculate to for us uneducated?
Couple of feet on the average, maybe.
I mean, that's a bunch of yards of dirt.
But we're also, that's part of the reason why we're excavating the ponds is to be able to generate that material from the construction of the project.
Imagine when you start digging out for that pond down there, what you gonna get is muck and I'm not sure how stable that is to be used for foundation on the house.
Based on the geotechnical report that we have, it's buildable material, construction quality material for use as subgrade. That's not to say that there isn't something, to your point, but we think we've done our due diligence on that, that particular piece.
If you determine the material not acceptable, then you wouldn't use it.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm certainly not a geologist and I'm just an old country boy, but that sounds like digging in a swamp to put a house on. I don't know about that. I don't know if I'd want it myself.
Any more questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment on this?
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Steve Tatum, Matheson Jones. I've not been sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth?
I do. Got a little packet for you. The same packet I gave you all at plant.
Steven, do you want this introduced as an exhibit in the record?
Yes, please. Steven Tatum, and that's Steven with a P.H. And I'm here this morning representing Jolly Bay Farms, which is owned by Mr. Steve Sammons, who's here with me today. When you get your packet in front of you, you'll see the piece of property there in between thirty-two eighty and Fluffy Landing Road at the curve. I believe, Mr. Chapman, that's a lot of the area you were talking about having issues with flooding. We've got several concerns. Let me start off with, we're not here to oppose the project in and of itself. We're happy with the new design. We like the fact that they're coming in trying to do something nice in the area. That's not an issue for us. What we don't want to happen is this compound the flooding issue on Mr. Sammons's property. In that first curve you see, just south of thirty-two eighty, that's where a lot of your flooding is occurring. You'll flip over to the second page, you'll see a strangely colored diagram. This was done using a drawing that flies a grid pattern over that area where it's colored. Flies about every eighteen inches, so it goes back and forth, back and forth, and it shoots down so it knows the highs and lows in the area. Your blue is your lowest, red's your highest. As you can see, right around that curve is where the lowest spot is on Fluffy Landing Road until you get down to the next curve. So everything is flowing off of Fluffy Landing and off of thirty-two eighty to that spot. That also feeds into Bear Creek. There's a little creek that runs underneath there at that corner, which flows into Bear Creek and then Bear Creek backs up, so it backs up. So adding even more impervious on the other end from the currently, what part of the development they're asking for technical review or technical approval of, even the impervious that's added there, once it pops off into Bear Creek, it's going to add new water that wasn't, isn't currently flowing in there to back it up even further. That being said, I know you guys are going to require that they resurface Fluffy Landing, or actually, I guess, black top it. That doesn't actually fix the problem for the flooding. Right now, one of the reasons you've got issues with flooding is Fluffy Landing's actually been raised quite a bit because of the flooding, but then that just causes the flooding to sheer off of the road onto the adjacent properties. So again, that puts more water on Mr. Sammons's property. Resurfacing that is just going to compound that problem, make it sheet off faster than it currently is with the crushed asphalt. So we would like to see, aside from just them resurfacing, if some kind of redesign works out with the county to fix the actual problem. If you're going to put out money to actually resurface this, let's do it correctly rather than just putting some black top down. On top of that issue, if you'll flip towards the back, your last four pages or so. Actually, just go to the second to last page. It looks like this. That particular page is a survey that was attached to a deed from DOT to the county. It shows when the county turned thirty-two eighty over, or I'm sorry, when the state turned thirty-two eighty over to the county. And they also turned over two drainage easements through there. That's what those two arrows are pointing to that you see. Those two drainage easements, one, they're not shown on the site plan anywhere, the conceptual site plan that they're asking for conceptual approval for today. They're also not being maintained by the county at this point. It is the county's responsibility, according to DOT, to maintain them and DEP has said that the county does have permission to maintain them without having to get a permit from DEP because they were established before nineteen fifty-four, I believe.
Yeah, but I think there was provision there that we would have to get a right of entry to get on that property even though we would maintain the ditch, if we can't get access to there, it's kind of hard to do it.
I agree. However, one of those is on my client's property. He wouldn't have an issue with that happening, Mr. Sammons. The other is on the applicant's property. So if we're going to maintain those, right now would be a great time to, let's make sure that gets done as a condition of your development order. Make them grant you a right of entry to get in there and maintain it and keep it open in their conceptual site plan so that you're not blocked by houses. And when I'm saying conceptual, I'm talking about the Phase Three, I don't remember the letter after that, but it's the stuff that's to the west of, to Mr. Sammons's property, that part of the development.
Is that?
That's what they're asking for conceptual approval of today.
Do you have this map?
I don't, but it's the pink area.
This pink area right here?
Yes, sir.
So this existing used improved rural village, that's your client's farm?
Yes.
And so this one cuts through?
Yeah, right, there's one that comes.
Comes through his property and then the other one probably is right behind these Phase Three F lots?
Most likely, yes, sir.
Is that right, Bill?
Because I know they're not building upon it. I know they've left it off according to their representations at the Planning Commission, that they did not build on it, that they don't have anything designed to be on it. But if you are needing a right of entry, now would be a great time to make sure that happens. And those are fifty-foot wide easements roughly and if you look at some of the pictures that we provided, you can tell, this is, this is an example of what the drainage easement looks like right now. So it's not, it's functioning as a stream, basically, which of course during a, even a minor rain, tends to flood. And which brings me back to another issue, I believe, are you designed to a hundred year or twenty-five year?
Roadways are designed to be twenty-five year, the finished floor is designed to be twenty-five.
Okay, all right. So you've got kind of a mix of the way they designed what storm event they're trying to take care of, but a twenty-five year storm at this point is not every twenty-five years when we're getting those on a consistent basis. So anything above and beyond that potentially is popping off and causing flooding in the rest of the area, which is something I believe needs to be addressed, particularly in relation to Fluffy Landing Road. And if you've got particular historical questions about the area and how the flooding occurs, Mr. Sammons would be more than happy to talk to you guys about that.
Just a twenty-five year event, how many inches of rain in this area would that be?
If memory serves, it's around twelve over a three-day period. It's generally consistent with a hurricane happening.
Or a thunderstorm.
Essentially what we had a couple of weekends ago.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We don't have any of our public works staff in here, do we?
I'll be honest with you, there's several issues I have, but until we talk to our public works people, I'm not really comfortable moving forward with this. I do have a question for you. Why have, why have we not had entryway from your client for four and a half?
Please, can you? This is, this is Mr. Sammons.
Last time we discussed this. Yeah, we can't hear you speak.
And you gotta be sworn in.
I was. My name is Steve Sammons, S-A-M-U-T-Z. Thank you. Last time we discussed the issue was back in two thousand and thirteen with the county and I didn't have any problem with access from my end of the property to deal with the drainage issue. And I called Bill Smith, who owned the other, that other part of the property and said, you got a problem with it. He says, heck no, you can do whatever you want. So that's what I communicated back. I'm unsure why it did or did not get addressed, but it's been out there since two thousand and thirteen when I met with the county. And I also have a concern with the south end of the flow, you know, the covert. And I also have a concern with the south end of the flow, you know, the covert to the south of my property, that road at Fluffy Landing, I think, has overflowed three times, flooded in the last four years. So when you put more water south on Bear Creek, which ends up down at the house that I live in, I've got the thirty acres at the end of Sunset Trail, and that's starting to back up some into the, into the property. I don't know what that does, if that's taken into account, that additional outflow from the, from the west side of the project. So I think the, the storm drainage needs to be looked at very carefully, and, and the road definitely, we need to resolve that to get that from dumping water onto the property floods me up.
Piggybacking on Commissioner Anderson, there, there are some comments from public works and the staff report and that make more questions than answers, but there is a, seems to be a significant problem with the utilities and where, where they're gonna go and has that been resolved?
Still ain't figured out why they put a sewer line in all right in the middle of a road.
Commissioner, it has not been resolved at this point. We're still working with the city to try and do that. In terms of the drainage, I would say that what, what we're doing in, in phase three A is not going to affect anything over in Fluffy Landing. And that's why it's only a technical approval on phase three A and conceptual on the balance. We understand there's an issue on Fluffy Landing. There's also wetlands on Fluffy Landing, and so this is not a simple, easy fix of, let's redesign Fluffy Landing because the permitting and the design efforts on Fluffy Landing are going to be significant. We have not put development into the area that Mr. Tatum has indicated is part of the easement. On the west side, the east side of the easement is on his client's property. And that was specifically because we understand that easement is the county's easement and is one that's going to be part of an area-wide solution to this problem. But it's not something that we can do in a simple and easy fix because there's a lot of actors that are going to be involved in all of this. And while we're happy to participate, we also would like to move forward with three A, which has nothing to do with Fluffy Landing, while we're trying to resolve the issues associated with Fluffy Landing, both in terms of drainage and utilities. And that's why the planning commission voted unanimously to move this forward, and that's why we're here today to request the same thing.
Forgetting to turn this on. Would your client grant us access so we can get to the easement?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
We did, we, that's not an issue for us.
Okay.
For us, that's the county's easement, and we're happy to participate in whatever we can do. I mean, that's, but that's something that's going to involve more effort, and that's why, that's why we're only here on three A. We want to get started on three A, and we can resolve the issues while we get moving on three A on the balance of this as we, as we move forward.
Okay. The two easements you're talking about, coming off of thirty-two eighty?
Yes, sir.
One is on y'all's property and one is on.
Mr. Sammons's property, yes, sir.
Alright. Those easements only extend. I'm, hang on a minute. How far south do they extend? Do they just come to where the two come in and why, that's it?
Yes, sir.
Well, the problem then is.
Getting them downstream.
Getting it downstream and including Bear Creek, it goes all the way back and around. It's, it's loaded up with logs and brush for forty years.
And, and you can see on our design, this area where the easement is here is all available for that. And, you know, it can come through there and connect ultimately down into this Bear Creek system.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at, even if we come in, come in there and take both of those easements and clean them all out till they come to the Y, if you don't do anything from there all the way down and around, you're gonna have a longer head right there. I mean, it's no different than what we're dealing with over at, on the north of the bay there at, I know, what's that subdivision we did with?
Brandon Oaks.
Brandon Oaks.
Brandon Oaks. They've got a ditch through there, stormwater. Nobody's maintaining, it's own private property, and everything jams up in there and it floods everybody around them. So I, I've got to be convinced that we've got to come up with some solution that we can keep that water moving so it doesn't back up over here. Now, as far as the road itself, it's higher than the property, I know that. I don't know what to do on that particular thing until the utilities are moved, as well as not we can even go in there and drop the road bed. I don't think we can because it'll be underwater too from the east to the west.
How big's the coverts under that area?
Coverts, maybe we can do something with the coverts, increase the size, but the problem, what you're running into is the, you can't get it out of there, no matter how big a pipe is.
Gentlemen, I would like to ask y'all to postpone this just till our engineer gets down here. He's on his way.
Okay.
And if that's amenable to y'all and the board, and as soon as he gets here, we'll bring this back up.
Sure.
Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So move. So move.
Second.
Where's your name?
You didn't even warn the name tag yet.
We ain't down with that. We need our leaders.
There's your leader.
Alright, where we at now? Number three?
Number two was postponed.
Two got postponed.
Two was postponed, so number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This brings us to item number three, the Mac Bayou lots six and seven development. Request approved by final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Baranti. It's submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of MBRE Healthcare. Requesting approval to develop approximately twenty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-two square feet of general office medical on lots six and seven of the Mac Bayou Center development on, which is approximately one point five five acres. Future land use of Village Mixed Use. This location is immediately to the east of the Sacred Heart of the Emmer Post Hospital, east of Mac Bayou. We'd like to request that staff report be entered into evidence. And the applicant is here to present their case.
Good morning, I'm Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. As Mac said, this is a office building that's located within an existing medical office complex right across the street from the hospital.
Just to give you an idea of where we are, the hospital is right over here across Mac Bayou. This is the goodie complex. Our site is in between the two existing office buildings, go off the scope here and here. It is part of the overall master plan development here.
All the infrastructure to support the development is already in place and has been in place for, since about two thousand and five or six for this, the roads, water, sewer, all of that.
Just to give you an idea, also, we do have some water management on site. Though the overall development has a master plan for the system, we do have a construction that pops off into their system, eventually add their retained for twenty-five year storm management. Then it pops off here and gets into the overall master plan system.
And that was part of the previously approved P U D, that's the plan for that. I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have here. It's relatively straightforward. The representatives from the applicant are here, and also Sacred Heart, who'll be using this building, if you have any questions for them.
Does parking and all, and how much parking is there as opposed to how much is required?
We have a hundred and sixteen spaces and a hundred and sixteen are required here.
Any other questions? Anybody from the audience? Not what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
So second?
I'll second his.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. We got a couple people moving on this board, so. Our new chairman, so we'll probably screw some stuff up. Any, any other comments from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
All opposed, say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item number four on our agenda, the Water Sound Origins Phase Four Plat. It's a request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Renee Bradley. It's a major plat application submitted by Interlight Engineering Corporation on behalf of the Water Sound Company. Requesting approval to plat fifty-four single-family lots on approximately fifteen point eight three acres with the future land use of Coastal Village One. This particular development is located within the Water Sound Origins, Water Sounds D R I and P U D, north of Highway ninety-eight near Inlet Beach. We'd like to request the staff report to be entered into record.
So move.
And the applicant is here to present their case.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering. I have been sworn in, and my last name is spelled S M I T H. And I'm representing the applicant. Water Sound Origins Phase Four is approved for three hundred and sixty-one single-family homes, and this is the first phase, which is fifty-four single-family homes. And this is the overall development, and the first phase of plat is in this area here, and several lots along the entry route here. So the infrastructure has been constructed and has been certified by Walton County. So I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Would we have any questions? Anyone from the audience like comment? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item number six on our agenda. This is the Carol Lake Town Homes, request approved by final order. It's been reviewed by Kelly Frumire. It's a major development submitted by Nautilus Civil Engineers on behalf of J A B Holdings LLC. Requesting approval to develop forty-four residential townhomes on approximately nine point four two acres with the future land use of neighborhood infill. Project's located on the west side of Veterans Road, about two thousand two hundred miles north of the intersection of Veterans Road and US ninety-eight, identified by the parcel number in your package. We'd like to request the staff report be entered into evidence, and the applicant is here to present their case.
Good morning, Commissioners. Curtis Smith with Nautilus Civil Engineers. I've been sworn in. As Mac said, we've got forty-four single-family townhome units. These will be platted townhomes. There's existing one single-family, I believe it's a mobile home onsite now, that'll be removed and forty-four townhomes will come in. Most notably on this project is a very large lake that's existing. And what we're doing with the lake for drainage improvements, we're actually utilizing the extra capacity of that to significantly reduce any outfall, going to the mosquito-controlled ditch that this all discharges to. We're actually cutting the hundred-year storm down from around twenty-seven cubic feet per second down to about ten cubic feet per second. So we're taking some, we're utilizing their space available to really improve the public rainways on this one as well. This project was a neighborhood infill, was subject to compatibility analysis. We, we proved in the, we illustrated the compatibility analysis that the main point of this is that this townhome project really provides a transition from the single-family development that's up on Veterans Road down to the really dense Commerce Park P U D that was approved several months ago. This is around four point six, seven units per acre. That Commerce Park had some apartments and things, and they were around ten units per acre. Whispering Lake is around about three units per acre, so it's, it's really a transitional property. I think I will just leave it there, and if you guys have any questions about anything on this, I'll be happy to answer this.
How many, how many parking spaces per unit?
So we actually overparked this one substantially. We put two parking spaces in, in the driveway each unit. Each unit either has a two or one-car garage, so every unit has either three or four parking spaces. We also added some visitor parking, a little bit down on the cul-de-sac and a little bit at the entrance as well.
What's your green space?
Basically, well, everything.
I mean, you have, you have any parks or anything like that?
We do have a park at the, at the entrance, a small park. We, we originally said we would make that a dog park, but, you know, we had some, we did a neighborhood meeting. We had some, some residents across the street, asked some questions about it, and said, you know, really, at this point, it doesn't need to be designated. We'll let the HOA determine what that park's used for in the future.
You got a pool or anything like that?
There is a pool in the center of the development. We've got a pool. We also have a dock. Right now, we're proposing out over the lake, existing lake. We're also improving the lake by putting an aeration system in it. It's so deep that really, D E P doesn't like when you go over about twelve-foot deep because there's, there's risk of stratification of the thermal levels in the water, and it could flip and really harm the wildlife. So to, to mitigate that, we're adding a bubbler system in it.
I noticed where you showed the pond and also the dock is structural designed by others and also under the pool by others. What does that mean?
Yes, sir. Those items, the, the final engineering design of those is usually done a little bit further down the line. It's part of the infrastructure. We'll get going building the roads and things. We'll have a structural engineer that'll actually review some structural drawings that the contract puts together on the dock design. The pool, that would be something like a Cox Pool, who'd come in and pull it permanent later on.
This opens on the Veterans?
Yes, sir.
Is there any space or provision for like a future turn lane or any improvements to, to Veterans?
So Veterans Road currently is a two-lane road with a curb and gutter system, so it's a fairly decent road. It is only about twenty-foot asphalt to asphalt, and there's another foot and a half or so in the gutter of the road. So it's a typical Walton County road. The, the problem with provisioning room for a turn lane is that the massive mosquito-controlled ditch sits in. That, that's one of the largest mosquito-controlled ditches we have in this area, and we're actually vastly improving that. We're gonna dig it out, re-stabilize it. We've got a covert, we're upsizing the covert almost three times what it is now to, to give it some more capacity. There's not really room for an additional turn lane, I don't believe. We looked at it because this project does have to pay such a substantial traffic impact fee. The owner wanted to use that for the area. Unfortunately, we just had nothing we could use it on.
Yeah, I think, I think I saw a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for.
Correct.
The, the reason I ask is, you know, there, there is a proposed project north of you that's wanting to open up Veterans Lane all the way to Chad Holly, which would substantially increase the traffic. So how do you think that will impact your?
So currently, the, some traffic questions came up in the planning commission, as you probably remember, about the, I, I actually did a signal warrant analysis on ninety-eight and Veterans, and it really doesn't even hit the radar on signal warrants for F, for F D O T. This particular area currently only has about ninety-seven trips per hour. Until you get into around five hundred trips, it, it just doesn't even hit the radar for signal warrant. It's about, it's actually, it has left turn, right turn from ninety-eight. It's got a left turn, right turn into ninety-eight. So short of a signal, that's as good as it really gets.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, say, if the proposed development north of you were to come in at the size that it's currently proposed at, and if you opened up Veterans all the way to Chad Holly, which brings all that traffic, easier way to get, in other words, are all your potential customers gonna be up here screaming because they can't get on the Veterans at some point? And is there space in there that we could do some road improvements in the future on Vet, on Veterans?
On Veterans.
To allow your people to get on Veterans?
You know, without some substantial changes to that mosquito-control ditch, I'm not sure. It would really have to go on the other side if the improvements were made closer to Whispering Lake. Basically, that mosquito-control ditch actually encroaches onto the subject property a little bit. It takes up about twenty feet of the sixty-six-foot width right away there, so. I do think it is possible, but it would go the other direction rather than into this mosquito-control.
Any more questions for that? Any questions from the audience? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Thank you, commissioners. This moves us to item number seven on our agenda. The Southern Pines Platte, requested approval of final platte. It's been reviewed by Tim Brown of our staff. Uh, the application is made by Rare Earth Surveying and Mapping on behalf of Treehouse Pines LLC. They're requesting to platte thirty-six single-family lots on approximately nine point nine eight acres with the future land use of low-density residential. Project's located on the east side of Nelly Drive, north of Chad Holly, and south of East Nursery Road, identified by the parcel number in your package. Uh, we'd like to request that the staff report be entered into evidence.
Send it.
Uh, and the applicant is here to present their case.
Good morning. I'm Shannon with Rare Earth. Pardon me? I don't believe so, no matter.
Okay, could you raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll provide so this board will be the truth?
I shall.
Thank you.
You got anything you wanna add to this?
Well, no, sir. I think the, uh, I think Mr. Carpenter, uh, spelled it all out. It's a nice little subdivision, well put together. I think it'll be a very, uh, nice, um, set of houses for some few to live out that way.
I think I'm seeing two stormwater ponds. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And where do they pop off and go to, what, if they get full?
Uh, both of those pop off into, uh, into the wetlands, but they have, uh, ultimately a, a stormwater infiltration bed on the subtlety most portion of the property, which those stormwater infiltration beds accumulate, uh, any of the overflow. I think with the, with the pop-offs, in the event of a severe storm, they would err towards the ditch, uh, on the westly portion of the property. But the infiltration beds, uh, with the capacities put forth by engineers should handle all, uh, big overflow or, uh, hundred-year flood events.
Okay. Is it designed to a hundred-year plan or storm, or what's the plan on it?
Uh, I wanna say, say to the best of my knowledge, yes, sir, it is to a hundred-year storm plan.
And we can certainly ask these questions if you'd like. I just was gonna remind you all that they're here for plating, so they've already come through with their development order, and those issues would have been addressed at that time. I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just.
You cut me off from fifteen minutes of questions. Too deep.
Any more, any more questions? Any questions from the audience? Say a nay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Happy Christmas. Thank you.
Mike, we'll go back to continuing Bear Creek to Phase Three.
And I think our representatives from Public Works are here now that would be available to answer questions that you might have had earlier.
And Mac, this is, this is not the technical part, right?
The technical request is on Phase Three A, which is immediately south of the approved and developed Phase Two. And it's internal to the project. Phase Three B through Three F would be affected by anything on Fluffy Landing Road. The stormwater easements that we discussed earlier that come off of thirty-two eighty. And any, any decision on relocation of utilities along Fluffy Landing Road. So, we're not asking for technical approval today on Phase Three B through Three F. Potentially impacted by these issues we just discussed. Just technical on Three A and conceptual on the other.
Okay. I just want to make a quick comment before Greg gets up here. I totally agree that, yes, we're just primarily responsible for Three A today. But you're asking for a conceptual agreement or understanding on the remaining parcels. And as I've mentioned earlier on, there's two drainage easements that come off of thirty-two eighty that come basically in a southerly direction to come into Bear Creek. I mentioned shortly, not mentioned, but I talked with our county engineer. And he has advised me that both of those easements would require permitting from the Corps and DEP because they're in wetlands. Now, I see you're shaking your head no, but basically... Okay, hang on. So, we've got to work around that. And mainly, I'm bringing, I'm bringing that up as you move to the remaining phases that are going to have impact or next to these drainage easements through here or along Bear Creek that need to make some, put some thought to what you're going to do to try and minimize and improve the stormwater runoff there. And you said there's a letter in here that says, DEP says, now you're going to have to come to the podium.
Stephen Tatum again. There is an email in that packet from DEP Local Office on Permit that says DEP does not require any kind of permitting for maintenance of those easements that were established before nineteen fifty-four, I believe, is the word.
Okay, well, it's a...
I don't have it in front of me, but now, as far as the Corps goes...
Now, that's different.
That's the difference. They may require. I don't know, and I haven't looked into it.
Well, those are things that we can obviously find out for sure. If DEP is taking this position on this email from April of twenty thirteen, that they, DEP, ain't got a dog in that hunt, then we'll just have to see what impact the Corps would have.
And they're really easy to deal with, the Corps is.
Do what now?
It's being funny. Said the Corps is easy to deal with, so I saw you.
Oh, yeah, right. And maybe he'll do something with it, like do away with it. But anyway, okay, thank you. All right.
Greg, would you come out, please?
Could you raise your hand to be sworn in? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Greg, you heard my comments concerning the easements through there. Are you familiar with or seen this email from DEP saying it's not necessary?
Yes, sir. I've seen that letter. That was provided to us previously. And also, our environmental manager, Scott Caraway, he's looked at it also. And basically, I'm not sure that necessarily the DEP was provided all the facts. I don't know if they realized that we have not maintained that since, you know, since the county has acquired it. But also, the Corps is not, but there are, currently, it would require mitigation and a permit to go in there and do any work. Particularly, even with the Corps, it would require the Corps' approval and also the DEP's approval. But if it's the Board's wishes, we'll be happy to pursue that if it's the intent that we can go in there and Public Works and can help in some manner. Just for the record, I would just like to talk about maybe...
Brett, before you start that, this is a newbie question. How much does permits cost the county?
You know, if a consultant does it, it's quite expensive. We have capabilities in-house to do permitting. We have a very talented staff of environmental folks. And it would require, you know, permit application submitted, permit application fee. And right now, permits with the Corps engineers can run from one to two years to actually obtain a permit.
So, even in-house, you've got a substantial time cost on our...
If a consultant does it, it's thirty to forty grand would be just a rough estimate. That's kind of what mitigation and, well, and the other, that's another cost would be is if you're going to impact, they usually want mitigation and, and kind of a rule of thumb right now is it's about seventy-five thousand per acre for, for impacts. So, if you impact an acre, then you can cut a check to a mitigation bank and then, and that offsets in their, their minds the impacts that you do.
Now, you're talking about serious money.
It can be, yes. You know, not having done a wetland assessment other than a preliminary one that was done by Scott and those guys, couldn't give you a good number.
What is the current drainage plan on Fluffy Land?
Currently, the drainage off Fluffy Land has, has obviously been there for quite a while. It's, it's more or less considered impervious because it's got mill mat on it. And currently, all the drainage off Fluffy Land itself is conveyed through roadside swells to outfall next to where a cross drain is, where the low spot on the road is.
Is there, is there any plans in Public Works now to improve the drainage on Fluffy Land?
Not currently. You know, we had a couple hundred-year events in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, and we went out into all the affected areas to evaluate them. And there were studies done for probably sixty basins that were generated in this particular area. I don't know that it was part of that study.
Well, this is a basin, is it not? This area right in here around Fluffy Land and thirty-two eighty is a basin?
Well, I mean, it's, it's appears to be an actual creek that then goes under some cross drains on Fluffy Landing Road. But the actual watershed is, I'd have to double check. I mean, there's a pretty large watershed that basically is north of this area that actually all drains through here and then ultimately goes out through the bay. I forget what the name of, or if that's a named creek or not.
Bear.
Bear Creek. Okay, thank you.
Will?
Just, just a general, some general statements as far as our involvement at Public Works. We, we were contacted to weigh in on some development conditions that were put on the original project. And it was a commitment by the previous developer to do, construct turn lanes on thirty-two eighty. Basically, it's a requirement to construct a westbound left at the entrance to the project. I think they volunteered to construct a right eastbound right. And then there's a requirement for an eastbound right at Fluffy Landing Road. There was a commitment to dedicate fifty-foot of right-of-way along thirty-two eighty, along the front edge of their property. And a commitment to overlay Fluffy Landing Road on the county maintaining dirt portion of it. And in, in recent correspondence, we've actually requested too that they dedicate some additional right-of-way to make fifty foot so at some point in the future, you know, the road could be centered and the utilities could, could be relocated out from under the right-of-way. So, that was like an additional condition that they agreed to recently when we were going through the review process on the roadway improvement plans on County Road thirty-two eighty and Fluffy Landing Road. Now, as a general statement, the county has stormwater...
And I think our representatives from Public Works are here now that would be available to answer questions that you might have had earlier.
And Mac, this is, uh, this is not the technical part, right?
The technical request is on Phase Three A, which is immediately south of the approved and developed Phase Two. And it's internal to the project. Phase Three B through Three F would be affected by anything on Fluffy Landing Road. The stormwater easements that we discussed earlier that come off of thirty-two eighty. And any, any decision on relocation of utilities along Fluffy Landing Road. So, we're not asking for technical approval today on Phase Three B through Three F. Potentially impacted by these issues we just discussed. Just technical on Three A and conceptual on the other.
Okay. I just, I'm gonna make a quick comment before Greg gets up here. I totally agree that, yes, we're just primarily responsible for Three A today. But you're asking for conceptual agreement or understanding on the remaining parcels. And as I've mentioned earlier on, there's two drainage easements that come off of thirty-two eighty that come basically in a southerly direction to come into Bear Creek. I mentioned shortly, uh, not mentioned, but I talked with our en- uh, county engineer. And he has advised me that both of those easements would require permitting from the Corps and DEP because they're in wetlands. Now, I see you're shaking your head no, but, um, basi-
They have their letter in that packet.
Okay, hang on. So, we gotta work around that. And mainly, I'm bringing, I'm bringing that up as you move to the remaining phases that gonna have impact or next to these drainage easements through here or along Bear Creek that need to make some, put some thought to what you're gonna do to try and minimize and improve the stormwater runoff there. And you said there's a letter in here that says, DEP says, or, no, you're gonna have to come to the podium.
Steven Tatum again. There is an email in that packet from DEP, um, local office on permitting. It says DEP does not require any kind of permitting for maintenance of those easements that were established before nineteen fifty-four, I believe, is the word, the, the-
Okay, well, it's a-
I don't have it in front of me, but, um, now, as far as the Corps goes, um-
Now, that's different.
That's the difference, they may require, I don't know, and I haven't looked into-
Well, those are things that we can obviously find out for sure.
Absolutely.
Uh, if DEP is taking this position on this email from April of twenty thirteen, that they, DEP ain't got a dog in that hunt, then we'll just have to see what-
See what the Corps says.
Impact the Corps would have.
And they're really easy to deal with, the Corps is, so.
Do what now?
It was being funny, said the Corps is easy to deal with, so I-
Oh, yeah, right, mhm. And maybe he'll do something with it, like do away with it, but anyway. Okay, thank you. All right. Oh, Greg, that's her.
Greg, would you come out, please?
Uh, could you raise your hand to be sworn in? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Greg, you heard my, my comments concerning the easements through there. Uh, are you familiar with or seen this email from DEP saying it's not necessary?
Yes, sir, I, I've seen that letter. Um, that was provided to us, um, previously. And, uh, also, um, our environmental manager, Scott Caraway, he's looked at it also. And, uh, basically, uh, I'm not sure that, uh, that necessarily the DEP was provided all the facts. That I don't know if they net realized that we have not maintained that since, you know, it was, since the county has acquired it. But also the Corps is another, but there are, currently, it would, it would require mitigation and a, uh, permit to go in there and do any work. And particularly, even with the Corps, um, you, it would require the Corps approval and also, um, the DEP's approval. But if it's the Board's wishes, we'll have, be happy to pursue that if it's the intent that we can go in there and, and Public Works and can help in some manner. Just for the record, I'd, I would just like to talk about maybe-
Brett, before you start that, this is a newbie question. How much do those permits cost the county?
You know, i- if a consultant does it, it, it is quite expensive. Um, we, we have capabilities in-house to do, um, permitting. We have a, a very talented staff of, and, environmental folks. And, uh, it would require, you know, um, uh, permit application submitted, a permit application fee. And right now, um, permits with the, the Corps engineers can run from one to two years to actually obtain a permit, but, um-
So, even in-house, you got a substantial time cost on our-
If a consultant does it, it's thirty to forty grand would be just a rough estimate. Um, that's kind of what mitigation and, and, well, and the other, that's another cost would be is if you're gonna impact, they usually want mitigation and, and kind of, uh, a rule of thumb right now is it's about seventy-five thousand per acre for, for impact. So, if you impact an acre, then you can, um, cut a check to, um, a mitigation bank and then, and that offsets in their, their minds the impacts that you do.
Now, you're talking about serious money.
Uh, it, it can be, yes. Um, you know, not having, uh, done a wetland assessment other than a preliminary one that was done by, um, Scott and those guys, couldn't give you a good number.
What is the current drainage plan on Fluffy Land?
Um, currently, the, the drainage off Fluffy Landing is, it's obviously, um, been there for quite a while. Um, it's, it's more or less considered impervious, um, because it's got mill mat on it. And currently, all the drainage off Fluffy Landing itself is conveyed through roadside swells to, um, um, outfall um, next to, uh, where, where, where a cross drain is, where the low spot on the road is.
Is there, is there any plans in Public Works now to improve the drainage on Fluffy Land?
Uh, not currently. Um, you know, we had a couple hundred year events in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. And we went out and to all the affected areas to, um, evaluate them. And there were studies done for probably, uh, sixty basins that, that were generated in this particular area. I don't know that, that it was part of that study.
Well, this is a basin, is it not? This area right in here around Fluffy Land and thirty-two eighty is a basin?
Well, I mean, uh, it's, it's, uh, appears to be an actual creek that then goes un- under some, some cross drains on Fluffy Landing Road. But the actual watershed is, um, uh, I'd, I'd have to double check. I mean, there's a pretty large watershed that, that basically is north of, of this area that actually all drains through here and then ultimately goes out through the bay. I forget what the name of, or if that's a named creek or not.
Bear.
Bear Creek, okay, thank you.
Well. Without a-
Just, just a general, some general statements as far as our involvement, um, at Public Works. We, uh, we were contacted to weigh in on some development kit conditions that were put on the original project. And, uh, there, it, uh, was a commitment by the, the previous developer to do, construct turn lanes on thirty-two eighty. Basically, it's a requirement to construct a, a westbound left at the entrance to the project. Uh, I think they volunteered to construct a right, uh, uh, eastbound right. And then there's a requirement for an eastbound right at Fluffy Landing Road. Uh, there's a commitment to dedicate fifty foot of right away along thirty-two eighty, along the, the frontage of their property. And, uh, a commitment to, um, overlay Fluffy Landing Road on the, the main, county maintaining dirt portion of it. And, in, in recent correspondence, we've actually requested too that they, uh, dedicate some additional right away to make fifty foot. So, at some point in the future, um, you know, the road could be centered and the utilities could, could be relocated out from under the right away. Um, so that was like an additional condition that they, uh, agreed to recently when we were going through the review process on the roadway improvement plans on County Road thirty-two eighty and Fluffy Landing Road. Now, as a general statement, uh, the county has stormwater regulations in place for new development. So, there is actually a water quality aspect and a flood control aspect to, to the county's regulations. So, um, you know, it's incumbent upon the developer's engineer to demonstrate that, that their stormwater management system is meeting our regulations and it should not be impacting adjacent, adjacent developers. That's why, you know, we put those stormwater regulations into place. So, um, we did not personally weigh in on the proposed, uh, stormwater plan for the internal development 'cause that's currently, um, being handled by outside Public Works, um, by a, a contract firm. But, so I can't specifically answer questions to the internal, other than in general.
Have any of those turn lanes been put in, or?
Sir?
Has any of those turn lanes or any of those improvements been actually completed?
No, sir, not yet, that, that's-
It was a condition of the development, right?
Yes, yes, that's, that's something that'll, uh, occur during the, the, um, the actual development of the project.
Okay, I, I don't wanna stay here all day and, and kick this dead horse around a little bit. But, um, since Phase Three A is the one we're looking at today, the rest of it's conceptual. I have to go through the technical review at a future date. Uh, I just want the developer to know and the adjacent landowner to know that, uh, it's gonna take some time to get some permits to maintain them. If the Corps will even let us get in there and remove dead logs, slams, trees, whatever. Uh, but, um, keep that in mind as you move forward on Phases, uh, Three F and, uh-
Three B, three B, yeah.
E and all them that border on Bear Creek there that, uh, gotta figure out some way once that water comes off of thirty-two eighty continues to move, it doesn't back up anywhere between there and wherever we can get it over here to the bay. So, I just want at least to let the developer know concerning my concerns about that at a future date when you come forward. That'll be something, uh, I will be looking at if it comes in here within the next couple of years.
I'm also not real happy about the county having to pay for it unless there's some benefit.
Well, I think, as the applicant said, this is, this, they're willing to work with the county on this, am I wrong? And so, he, he can't just say until we, they're in the negotiation stage, but you wanna have- Right now, we're just asked to vote on the technical for Phase Three, is that it?
Three A.
And, and the conceptual for the rest. There's a lot of work to be done here, gentlemen, I hope you know that. Uh, I, I, I know there's very much concern with this board about the drains. And I know that area quite well because all that was on my mail out for quite a few years. And, uh, Fluffy Landing, when I was doing the ma- it was a mess. About half the time, I couldn't go down there. So, uh, there is drainage problems there. And, uh, I would recommend, if this is passed today, that you guys start getting together with a plan that this board can, can live with. Uh, work, work with the county and the city and whoever else we, we have to work with. And let's get this, this started. But, uh, as of today, there's no more questions for, for Greg. Does the applicant have anything else?
Not most of the board has questions.
Does anyone else, do you have any questions?
I just wanna make sure that- Hello again. That I, that I, whether the ap- the applicant's going to be developing the property or not. I, I, it's incumbent, I think, upon the county to address that drainage easement next to my property that has not been maintained. It needs to be maintained, whether they develop the property or not, I'm getting flooded. I mean, things that are fifty foot easements on that survey that was done in, excuse me, I don't remember the year, two thousand and twelve, are in places down to eight feet. There's no place for the water to run back up on my property. And that goes the same for Fluffy Landing Road. You may, because the low point is at that corner, the high point's at thirty-two eighty, there's a low point between the covert and the curve. The road, the, the water has no way to get out to the, to the watershed area. It's stuck on my property and that needs to be addressed. That's all I wanted to say. It's just not the developer, we have responsibility with the county to get it done.
Greg? Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to make one, one point in the, just in the county's defense is the county's never maintained that DOT drainage, drainage easement. When the county, um, acquired that, that roadway from the state, um, the state had a, a drainage easement on it. To, based on my knowledge and talking with our, our, uh, foreman for the, for the zone, we've never maintained it. And it's a wetland now. I will, another point I'd like to make is Fluffy Landing Road's been there before a- anybody else built in in there. The county's been maintaining our drainage from Fluffy Landing Road in an acceptable manner. We've not done anything to cause any additional drainage problems on anybody in there. In other words, historically, what's going on today has been going on, um, in, twenty years ago. Now, obviously, if, if people don't develop correctly adjacent to the roadway, um, and they build in a flood plain and, and a lot of folks like to raise their property out of the flood plain so they're not impacted. But I just wanna, for the record, say that the county's been doing historically what we've always been doing. We have not done anything. If anything, we've improved the drainage through, actually, it was with, um, Commissioner Chapman. I guess about the time you came on board, but we all met out there, looked at what we could do within our right of way. We, we improved the ditch system so that no water from, from Fluffy Landing went on to this gentleman's property. And then actually, we actually changed out the culvert and increased the conveyance on him. So, I, just for the, on the county's behalf, I'd like to say we, we haven't done anything that would impact anybody's property. But if, if the board desires, we can, we can, uh, you know, look at, uh, possibly going in there and seeing if we could, uh, somehow, uh, and if there's some blockage, uh, in that DOT easement area, maybe, maybe we could get in there without a permit. A lot of times you can go in there if there's logs and stuff, if, uh, we could go in there and potentially pull logs and stuff out. It's just, you can get mechanical equipment in there and you start doing some digging. Well, it's my understanding through talking with Scott Caraway, we'll need a permit.
I think Commissioner Glavine made a, a very good point that, um, I don't believe the county is prepared to nor should go spend a lot of money to make this development work. If there are things that need to be done in those easements beyond what the county has historically done to maintain where we are, which apparently works, as Greg said, we hadn't done anything with them in twenty years. But if the developer needs some relief there and needs to work through the county easements and through a county process, it should be their burden to pay for those permits and improvements, whatever they may be. And so, I think, you know, we'd be prudent to put that on the record, um, that if-
Oh, and I'm sorry, also, I was gonna state that, um, either our county engineers or our contractor, whenever this, these phases come back for technical review, they will be involved in that process and can ensure that thirty-two eighty and Fluffy Landing, any issues with those are addressed at that time, right, Greg?
Yes, Greg.
So, just-
All right, that, that's all I was gonna add. I understand that Mr. Sammott is frustrated because this is a situation that's been out there for quite some time. But we didn't create it. We're, we're trying to fix it at this point and we're willing to cooperate with the county. We've given extra right of way along Fluffy Landing to try and, and demonstrate that cooperation. And we're gonna commit to you today that we're gonna do the best we can to assist in resolving the issues as best we can, given that we don't control a lot of this stuff. But insofar as we can, we're happy to help and we will help and we commit to do that.
All right. As far as, um, Phase A, I don't think there's any problem. As Commissioner Anderson said, there's a lot of work on the rest of this. And, uh, and there's a lot more moving parts from the adjacent landowners to regional, to, um, the city of Freeport and our own Public Works. There's a lot of moving parts to all this stuff, it's gotta be resolved before. But the technical part of A, I don't see it as much problem, yeah. That's how I drive.
Uh, yeah, and I agree with you, there, there are a lot of moving parts. And I think everybody involved knows there's still a lot of moving parts. But as of today, uh, if there's no more, uh, the applicant doesn't need any more time or nobody from the audience needs any more time, uh, just for today, what is the board's wishes? Mr. Chair, Mr. First Chair, I'll stand down and make a motion. I make a motion that we, we approve this, this phase of it with the understanding that there's a lot of work to be done. It's, it has to come back for technical review. And at that time, we'll decide, uh, whether we're, uh, in favor or not. That's my motion.
And so, just to clarify, um, that's technical approval of Phase Three A and conceptual approval of Phases Three B through F, and that's with all of the staff conditions mentioned in the staff report.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
You have a second?
You have a discussion?
I'll second for discussion. I, 'cause I just wanna make sure. If we approve the technical part today, that in no way encumbers us or that, uh, approve, approve anything on the rest of this in the future.
On the conceptual part? So, what we're approving today is the number of units. Um, that's what's being a- approved as part of the, and the general location of where those, um, lots will be located. Uh, but at the time that it comes back before you for technical approval for Phases Three B and F, the applicant will have to meet all of the requirements of the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. Issues about drainage and thirty-two eighty and Fluffy Landing will have to be addressed at that time. If the applicant does not meet the requirements of the Comp Plan and Land Development Code at that time, we would not be able to approve the project.
This doesn't put any requirement on, uh, the utilities to make a deal?
No, sir, so whenever they, um, come through for plating, they will have to have, um, demonstrated that they have, that the utilities have capacity for the development. So, we would, that's always a, a condition of, um, any development order approval or plating. So, that, that will have to be worked out by the time they come through for plating.
So, this doesn't encumber us to have to approve something in the future that doesn't look right? But right now, I don't think this looks right.
Okay, well, it does lock it in on the number of units and the general location of those units, right, Mac? But as far as the drainage and all of these other technical issues, no, we're not locked into anything. And those have to be addressed before this board could approve the project. I hope that I'm as clear as I can be, is that?
Any other discussion?
Hang on a minute, boy. Oh. I'm not too fond of these conceptual approvals for something that may happen, who knows when. So, uh, that's just the way I feel about it, my, 'cause you, things change and you've approved a concept and if it doesn't, things can happen. And I, I'm not too fond of approving conceptual, of giving conceptual approval that could be two, three years down the road, you never know.
Uh, I agree, I, and given, yeah, and setting the number of units right now seems way premature, way premature.
Mac, correct me, uh, 'cause I don't know the history of it, but I know that this project was originally approved in two thousand and six. So, we may have already approved-
The BCC has already given conceptual approval in nine, in two thousand and six.
Right, so I think we're already locked in.
Because they have changed the configuration and the actual locations, um, so-
But not the, the number of units have not been changed?
Nah, it's gonna be less than, I think, what was originally approved.
So, they're actually decreasing what the certain line?
Yes, if they can't meet the technical requirements for these remaining phases, then the board's under no obligation to approve them if they don't meet those requirements.
All right, okay. Got a motion and a second?
Oh, you wanna take another one?
I am.
Now, you wanna do it for, for a time?
No. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Uh-oh, huh-uh-oh. We're in that predicament then, we've got two, two. Based upon policy is, uh, does not, it's not approved. Status quo.
So, we had a motion to approve and it was a tag though, right?
Yes.
Does the board wanna consider any other motions at this time? And possibly consider a motion to continue this until we have a better?
Can, let me ask you a question. Can, can we approve the technical part and not the conceptual part? In other words, can we approve Three A and not the rest of it?
Uh, we can consider that. Um, I, I think that staff has presented evidence that both the technical and the conceptual parts, um, conform, conform with the documents of the Comp Plan and Land Development. But what we could do, if there's some concerns, is we could go ahead and approve the technical approval for Three A today and then continue the remaining items. Um, so we have, if that's the hangup, is we have a fifth member, um, so we gotta clear a vote on that.
I'll make that-
We could do that.
I'll make that motion if that's-
Just a second.
Okay.
We've already approved the conception of one.
Yes, but what they're bringing back to have reapproved is slightly different than what was previously approved.
And it's less density.
It's slightly less, I believe, but it's still within the parameters of that original two thousand and six BCC final.
I think that if we do not approve the conceptual plans for Three B through F, they still have conceptual approval under the two thousand and six.
It wouldn't be the plan that we'd like. I mean, we'd prefer this plan over that two thousand and six plan. I think the suggestion of possibly continuing the conceptual portion of this, uh, might give the applicant more time to work out the details on that particular, uh, group of phases, uh, and bring it back in a, a, possibly a more palatable condition for the board.
I think this points out why that, uh, approving these things and then, now we're twelve years later and it's, and not a one of us was sitting at that time. And we're sort of bound by something that apparently two of us aren't real happy with. So, um, that's why I don't, I'm not a big fan of these conceptual things either.
To give you a little bit of history here, the legislature helped us four separate times, uh, with the extensions of development orders, related to the downturn in the economy that were not Walden County-generated initiatives. Without that legislative intervention, this project, um, would not be here today. We'd be starting over from scratch. But the legislature did that and we're bound by, uh, what opportunity they provided to extend these things. So, yeah, we're in an unusual circumstance. I mean, Fluffy Landing Road didn't have utilities when the BCC originally directed the applicant to, uh, pave that to the dusted road standing. The project lay dormant for a while while it was benefiting from the legislative opportunities to extend the development order until the economy got better. And in the meantime, we had two utilities company, come and plant lines in the middle of the roadway. So, that, with all due respect, that's not the applicant's fault, but that's a circumstance we're having to work our way out of as a group, uh, from all of the different directions. The utility companies, the county, uh, our Public Works relate to the stormwater, the applicant, um, working through to get technical approval on what VCC originally approved in two thousand and six. So, it's, uh, I mean, this is not the perfect world, absolutely it is not. Uh, but we're just trying to do our best to make sure that, that the county fulfills its responsibilities on previous approvals and also hold the applicant to, uh, the standards that, that the county requires, uh, for full technical approval. But that, that might be an alternative that appears, if we could consider, uh, approving the technical phase, Phase Three A and continuing the other, uh, phases Three B through Three F.
I, I would prefer that, um, you know, if you wanna consider approving- I, I would prefer that, um, you know, if you want to consider approving three A today, the technical approval, we can go ahead and do that, but I would prefer us to continue, um, the conceptual approval of three B through F whenever we have a fifth member. Um, I, I don't think that, and then that way the applicant can have a definitive answer one way or another.
Well, here, here's the thing, I think we need to, to realize, uh, we're in a situation, as, as Ms. Parketer said, none of our almighty developers in this situation, not necessarily of their almighty. Uh, they've got a conceptual plan already approved. Uh, it's not the one that the county really likes, but worst case scenario for them, they go back to two thousand and six. Am I correct in saying that, Mac?
They would still have to come back for technical approval, but it'd be based on the two thousand and six BCC final order and the design that was proposed at that point.
And, and you, you say, did I misunderstand, that you said that the new conceptual plan is more in the county favors as opposed to the old conceptual?
Yes, sir, we believe it is better.
Okay. So, that's...
I understand what you're saying, but there's still things that, I, I think were premature, this, things need to be worked out before a conceptual, but I don't mind making a, a motion to...
I think what we would need is a, would be a motion to reconsider, um, and then the alternative, approve, uh, the technical approval of phase three A and a motion to continue to date certain, the conceptual approval of phases three B through three F.
I'll make that motion, whatever she said.
Should we have that in, if this does get approved, should that be in two final orders?
Yeah, I think so, just to be clear.
Uh, so, could, would we, would it be appropriate to have two motions, one on the technical phase and one on the, the conceptual group of phases?
Sure, we'll do it that way.
So, three, so I think...
Yeah, a motion to reconsider.
I make a motion to reconsider. We got a second?
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want some discussion?
I do.
Go ahead.
So, here's what I want us to understand. They're going to give what they know. The two thousand and six order says that. Is that right, Mac?
It's still in place.
So, if we don't pass the new, new plan, they really don't even have to come back.
They would still have to come back for technical approval based on that design.
They don't have to come back for a conceptual plan, they could go back to a plan that we don't really like.
That's true.
Uh, I think we're taking a real gamble here, to be honest with you, that might come back to bite us.
Well, I don't think, I don't think, at least on my part, what I'm saying is, I don't, I like, I'd rather have the plan that we like, I don't think that we're prepared to do that yet, that there's some things need to be worked out. So, I mean, given a choice between yes or no, I say no, given a choice between they bring it back and with these things worked out. So, I don't, that's why I don't mind a, approving A, which I think everybody agrees to, and then continuing the rest of it till we can get some answers.
I think, I think that's part of the motion. One, we've got, the motion is we approve three A, and three B through F would be brought back when we have a full board and then rehear that portion of it.
But right now, the motion is just to reconsider.
Reconsider.
Reconsider or denial, because two, two is a denial.
Right.
So, I'll make that motion to reconsider.
And we have second?
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, now, if we, if we can handle it in two separate motions, that'll probably be cleaner for staff. So, one would be a motion to approve technical approval of phase three A, and after that, we can call it up for the motion to continue the conceptual approval of phases three B through F.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve three A.
Got a motion, got a second.
And those were the staff conditions?
Yeah, with, uh, including the staff conditions.
Got a second? Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now you got the second motion.
Yes, sir, so a motion to continue, uh, consideration of phases three B through three F and to a date certain, what would you suggest?
February twenty-eighth at nine AM in this location.
Okay.
Do we have any idea if Commissioner Napper's going to be here?
I have no idea.
We can't, we can't.
Well, we'll... Well, that gives them, um, too much to address some concerns.
So, we need a motion moving at February twenty-eighth, nine AM, South Walton.
I'll make that in two.
Okay.
Are we having our meetings in South Walton in February?
Uh, as far as we know, so far, we are.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Okay. Did I get a second yet? Do you get a second?
Second.
Okay. Yes, sir.
If I might make a suggestion, just to make sure there's clarity, there's obviously a, an approved conceptual plan out there. Uh, the current conceptual plan that they're asking to approve offers some differences. Would it be prudent to ask them at that meeting to clearly identify the differences between the currently approved plan and the, uh, recommended plan so that it were very clear? Uh, and as the commissioner said, do, have, we've got something that's a lot better than what's in place now. That way, there's no question that, um, i- if you do move, move it forward, you'll understand with clarity what's in place today and moving forward with that action, and what would be in place if you take appropriate action.
I would, that, and I would really like some clarity on who's paying for what as far as, I mean, Greg was talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of mitigation and, uh, I'd like some of that too.
Okay, I think, uh, I think the applicant's kind of got an idea what we're looking at on that, okay. Uh, we got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Did that clean all that up?
Anything else?
Thank you, commissioners, that's all we have this morning.
Okay. Good job.